Good morning, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, July 19th, 2011, it's 9:00 AM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and with a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, roll call please.
Mayor Nets?
Here.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Here.
Councilmember Stefano?
Here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember Mormon?
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the July 5th City Council meeting and the July 12th City Council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Moved for approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing August 2nd as National Night Out. Mr. Meeker.
I went outside for my glasses for this. Okay. Well, good morning all. Is there somebody to receive this?
Yes, I have.
Oh, Kevin, come on. Last time I shook hands with this guy, he tased me.
I don't blame him.
He should've cuffed you also.
Thank you for your help and support, Mr. Mormon. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch and Target are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, violence prevention program on August 2nd, 2001, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 28th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Palm Coast to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperation, police community crime prevention efforts, and whereas the Flagler County Sheriff's Office assists the community in crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the city of Palm Coast and is sponsoring National Night Out 2001, sorry, 2011 locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the city of Palm Coast be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the city of Palm Coast. And whereas law enforcement, community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program, now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, urge all citizens of Palm Coast to join the Flagler County Sheriff's Office, the National Association of Town Watch, and Target in supporting the 28th Annual National Night Out on August 2nd, 2011, signed this day, July 2, 2011, the mayor, John Nets. Sir, it's all yours.
Thank you very much.
You betcha.
Mayor? Council? Mr. Landon, nice to see you. Just to add, I mean, proclamation pretty much says it all, but the event will take place in the parking lot of Flagler Palm Coast High School. They've been nice enough to lend us the property as a venue again for the fourth year in a row. Some information on how to protect yourself from becoming a victim of the most prevalent crimes in society today will be available. Numerous Neighborhood Watch representatives will be on hand if anybody wants to find out information about Neighborhood Watch or join a Neighborhood Watch group. Child fingerprinting and child safety information will be offered, as well as bounce house and rock climb activities. Among the features of the event will be the Sheriff's Office K-9 unit, they will do a demonstration, as well as our award-winning motor unit. Let's see, I did write a few things down here. Pretty much, I just want to say thank you for acknowledging the second Tuesday of the hottest month of the year as National Night Out.
You picked it.
For the fourth year in a row, it's an actual event, I have no control over the date, but I hope that people come out. Again, there'll be a lot of crime prevention information to be given out, lots of activity for the kids, so, thank you again.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, Humane Society coloring contest winners, Mr. Landon?
Actually Candace is going to handle this one for us.
I will handle it. Good morning, my name is Candace DeMarco, I'm currently the recreation supervisor for the city of Palm Coast. These are our camp, fellow campers right here. Today I have the great pleasure of introducing Christina Franzen and Jen Zuber, who serve as a board member for the Flagler Humane Society. These ladies are here to explain the history behind the Flagler Humane Society coloring contest and also announce our winners.
Good morning and thanks for having us today. Through our humane education program, we strive to educate young people on the concepts of respect and compassion for animals in hopes that they will internalize these values for a lifetime. As an extension of these efforts, we launched the Miss Ellie coloring contests last month, which ran through the entire month of June in honor of Ellie, an eight-year-old shepherd mix who was adopted by Thomas and Joanne Velano of Palm Coast. All too often, older dogs are overlooked in the shelters in favor of puppies, but with Ellie, age wasn't her only obstacle, she was also brought in in generally poor health and had heartworms. But when Jen and I met her, we just knew there was something special about her, and thankfully, so did Thomas, and they decided to bring her home. They've given her a happy home, and, you know, thankfully, she has recovered, she's doing very well, and she will begin heartworm treatment in the upcoming months. Ellie's story has a happy ending, but it's really important that we continue to raise awareness so that more animals like her can find forever homes. I'm pleased to report that we received 115 submissions to the coloring contest, and about 70 of those came from students at the Fit 'n Fun summer camp. We're exceedingly thankful to Park and Recreation coordinators for getting the kids involved with the contest, and it's our privilege to be here today to present this year's winners, Brianna Wilson and Danielle Eldridge, with their summer prize packs, which include a $10 Walmart gift certificate. Congratulations to you both, if you want to come on.
It's a big deal.
It's okay to smile.
Brianna, smile. Aw.
Thank you very much, and on behalf of all of our four-legged friends, I guess, some more or less, thank you for all of your efforts on their behalf.
Birds only had two.
All right, birds have two. I guess, arachnids have eight, insects have six.
Oh, you guys. Oh, man. And I'm in the middle between the two of them.
We have no action agenda items, we come bringing those to the consent agenda, which is items four through eight. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
We'll find you.
If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries without objection. This brings us to the end of the consent agenda and to public participation. Anyone from the public wish to speak on anything not on today's agenda? Please poach the podium, give us your name, and limit your contribution to three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, Jason DiLorenzo, Flagler Home Builders Association. June of 2009, in June of 2009, you approved the permit fee reduction, and to date, to date?
You're on.
Am I on? Okay. To date, the residents of Palm Coast have saved nearly $1.4 million through that, but it is set to sunset this year, and through discussions with staff, there's still about $3.2 million, or that's what'll be expected to be remaining in December, about $3.2 million. So, I think it would be important for you to consider extending that for probably another year would be correct. The building department budget is approximately $1 million, I haven't seen what it's proposed for next fiscal year, but that would probably be about the right timeframe to extend it for another year and keep that 90% extension going and to save the citizens even more money. My second question I have has to do with the stormwater fees that you, or the stormwater ordinance that you approved in March. I think there was going to be a discussion about going back to, paying refunds back to 2004, I think you did it through 2008, and the discussion, or what I remember from the minutes, was going back to 2004. And my question is if, are you going to discuss that during this upcoming budget, or is there a timeframe for when you're going to discuss that? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Dennis Cross, 47 Front Street. Question regarding, on behalf of multiple candidates, if I say it that way. The question is, which seats, council seats, will actually appear on the September 13th primary election? Many of us have prepared all of our campaign material geared to a September 13th primary, be it early voting, poll coverage, et cetera, et cetera, and now we understand, there's a question about, for the council seats at least, we understand in the mayor's case, since there are multiple candidates, over two, the question is, for the two council seats, is that going to be on, will the candidates be on that ballot for the primary? And the question basically is a matter of interpretation, and I think your attorney has apparently rendered you a decision, and it's key, because if I understand it, even though you've rendered a decision until the end of qualifying, which would be August 9th, another candidate could come on in the case of that. So, the situation is this, many of the candidates, I'll speak for myself, have prepared our campaign literature, our signs, our websites, and we're campaigning to a September 13th date, and I think if I understand the current situation, quote, "Many of us will not be on the ballot at all in the primaries." So I said, you know, eventually you have to tell us and give us a decision, are we or aren't we on your ballot on September 13th for the two council seats? Thank you.
We'll get you an answer. Thank you.
We don't know, because we're at a closing date.
Next speaker. Sign-on approach to, oh, okay. I should've said next speaker three times.
Good morning. My name is Peter Legana, 24 Carlos Court. I understand there's an opportunity for the city of Palm Coast to receive their fire services from Flagler County. I see this as, as an opportunity, the administrative cost reduction would be a benefit to the city, the combination of services would eliminate duplication of services, and I think, again, be a benefit for the city of Palm Coast. Flagler County Fire Department is award-winning, their EMTs have won competitions worldwide twice and finished second once. One of their captains has been selected by the Division of Forestry to be an operational safety supervisor at a large fire in Georgia. It's just award-winning and great talent there, and I think the city of Palm Coast would benefit and that there would be a reduction in cost. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Third time's a charm, next speaker. Sign-on approach to podium, we close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council, but first, Mr. Landon, Mr. DiLorenzo's suggestion about extending the building fee for another year, it seems reasonable, seems within budget, I'd like to put that on the workshop for the next meeting, for discussion, for action following council meeting.
Yeah, it, that was always the intent, and now's the timely time because of the timing, so we'll do that.
The, Mr. DiLorenzo's second question about the stormwater ordinance, I'll give you my interpretation. We guesstimated that the impact on the budget for the action we took was in the order of $700,000, but until you have made all the first round of refunds, and until you have determined that everybody who's eligible has received it, we simply don't know the impact. Mr. Meeker, as I recall, made the comment that the money wasn't collected all at once, therefore, whatever we do, it won't necessarily be returned all at once, but do we have a schedule for making that determination?
Timing's good, because I, just yesterday afternoon, received a briefing from both finance and stormwater. Not all of the new calculations are complete yet, I mean, there were thousands of them, and therefore, even going into this budget season, I like, got to have an estimate, so we're going to do a general conservative estimate, but we still do not have all of those individual properties calculated, so, the idea was to, after we had all the final numbers, that city council at that time could review the actual impact and what would happen if we went back to '04, as you asked us to take a look at, but not until we had all the numbers final, which isn't the case now. Timing? Don't have a solid number for you, let's say 60 days from now, hopefully it will be finished.
Mr. Cross's question about the primary versus general election. Mr. Reichman, I've read your opinion, would you care to elaborate?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and I did provide to the, to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council members yesterday, an opinion from our office on this issue of the primary versus general election, and this was a matter that had been at issue based upon language in the 1999 charter. And in the 1999 charter, that which created the city of Palm Coast, there were two different spots, and one of them said that if there were more than two candidates who qualify, who qualify for an office, then a primary will be held in September. Then it goes on to say, this isn't the 1999, that if there were two or more, so again, the first part was more than two, and then the second section, this is again a 1999 charter, said if there were two or more candidates who qualify, those candidates and their names should be placed on the ballot for the primary. Now, obviously, that creates a problem. Now, the 1999 elections and the 2001 elections, Mr. Mayor, there were two elections, two seats that were up for election where there were two names, and those races were decided at the primary. Now, in the year 2001, there was a special act that was passed by the Florida Legislature, and it was, one of the purposes of that act, the purpose of the act was to amend the city charter, the 1999 charter, which I just mentioned. And one of the main purposes, in fact, it's stated in the title of that special act, was to eliminate this arguable internal inconsistency. And it was to eliminate the inconsistent language, and specifically, what was taken out of the 1999 charter was the language where it said that if there were two or more candidates who qualified, they would be on the primary. So what does that leave us? It leaves us with a charter that specifically says that you only have a primary election if it's more than two. So the only conclusion that can be reached, the only conclusion that can be reached from reasonable interpretation of your current charter, is that if you have two names on the ballot, those, that decision, that election will be in the regular election, which will be in November. Now, I want to qualify that, and that is, that's the theoretical answer. Now, as to this election, we can't tell which, as to which seat is going to be decided in the primary or in the regular election until we get done with qualifying. You could have two now and three tomorrow. You could have two the day before the end of qualifying and three at the end of qualifying. So, again, my opinion did not speak to the specific seats up for election, it spoke to what would happen at the end of qualifying for this election.
Mr. Landon?
Mayor, if I could reemphasize that last part, there's a lot of people saying that, well, there's so many candidates for one seat and so many for the other. We do not know. And until qualifying's over, we could still have more people come forth, and so, making that determination prior to that would be assuming that we know that nobody else is coming forth. It is not uncommon in a municipal election to have someone show up in the last day and file the papers and get on the ballot. So, until that last day of qualifying, when the bell rings and you no longer have opportunity to file, we're not going to determine whether a given seat will be on September or the November ballot, because by law, we couldn't tell you.
I know that leaves some question in the candidate's mind, but that's, that's what the city charter says, and that's what Florida election law says. All right. Discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. Meeker, we'll start with you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to toss the numbers out there for the council's consideration as we continue to deliberate on the budget. And...
Was it a question?
The numbers that I want to discuss were some proposed areas where I felt we could reduce the budget, and then a few other areas where I would take some of that money and move it back into other areas. I'm always talking up here about the money hose, and in this case, I have three ideas of where I'd like to focus that money hose on a little bit differently than what we've done last year. The areas that I'd like to consider for the reduction, the first one would be the Streets Improvement Fund and the, that revenue cost sharing that Ray had discussed, I'd like to pull 1.3 million out of that. The local options sales tax, I'd like to take 1.6 out of that. The State Road 100 CRA, I think there will be a little bit of additional money in that account that is over and above what our debt service is. I'm estimating it to be maybe .3, you know, $300,000. I'd like to take that as a partial payment back to the money that is owed the general fund. I know we have some disagreements about the Fleet Management Fund, but my proposal would be that the Fleet Management Fund be reduced by 500,000. My philosophy on that is that it's a, the plan that is in place is a seven-year plan. There's nothing magical about the number seven. That wouldn't, in other words, when, the argument is, is if I take 500,000 out of this year, I have to put in 500,000 next year, plus the 500,000 that I should have put in this year in order to keep on the plan. Well, in my mind, I moved the plan from seven years to eight years, and I don't have to deal with that. The last item would be to close the Clubhouse Drive Fire Station to fire and leave it strictly as a, an ENT-type function. Those changes would equal about $4.7 million out of the fund. However, I'd like to then refocus some of that money, and I'd like to take $750,000 of it and focus it back on capital projects, and I'd like to do about a million to stormwater management for some of the larger structures that we need to be replacing, and I'd like to leave 950,000 out there in kind of a miscellaneous category so that, you know, when we have to put up another fence somewhere, we're not wondering where we're going to come, you know, come up with the money. That leaves a balance of $2 million, which is the last estimate I heard of the amount that we would be short in the difference between property values and leaving the mileage rate where it is right now. That would equal that difference, and that, unless some of my numbers don't fit the other budget projections in my mind, that kind of leaves the mileage rate right where it is right now. And that's, I just wanted to toss that out there, leave it for council's consideration over, you know, deliberation period, nothing that I'm asking for any action on, it's just my thoughts on what would be appropriate areas to reduce in the budget.
What I'd like you to do is put those numbers to paper, and at our next workshop, provide them to council.
Yeah.
Okay. Not that little, not that little scrap of paper. All right, I'll...
But it's, I mean, clearly, it's, it's an attempt to address the issue that we're facing, and...
It could be right, could be wrong.
Well, but it's an option.
It's something to discuss.
And, you know, council's going to decide maybe less draconian cuts and less, therefore, to capital projects or some admixture thereof.
The one thing I liked about this, by the way, is it left our level of service, at least as I understand things, it leaves the level of service untouched. We talked about, you know, whether we should be dealing with, you know, a team at Public Works or code enforcement, this is in our workshop that we discussed. It doesn't touch that at all. Keeps our level of service...
From what I understand, what it would do, it would fund the road improvement only from the half-cent sales tax.
Yeah.
Which we promised would be used exclusively for street improvements. There was a collateral representation that that would represent on the order of 50 miles a year. When the price of asphalt and petroleum went up, that never, you couldn't do 50 with what that raised. This would cut you back to...
Some number.
Twenty, some number, which Mr. Landon will find out for us. The good news that speaks in favor of that portion of your proposal is that most of the grass fault, the terribly deteriorated roads, have been replaced. We're not in such dire straits now as we were nine years ago, so it's certainly worth considering.
Agreed, and that, that happened well before I got on council. That was the decision made by past council and the city staff and even the previous city manager, you know, took good care of the city during those times, and allows us to have the flexibility to refocus the hose in a little different area now. But thank you, I'll have something typed up and prepared for, did you say the workshop, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Stefano?
Well, I was thinking too, but not to that extent. And Mr. Landon knows, my feeling about Bulldog Drive, we do take, I believe the money is coming from the CRA, and there's a lot of money that's going to be spent on redoing Bulldog Drive, and I, I think we need to reevaluate that and let that money go back into CRA. You have a beautiful road, Town Center Boulevard, it goes up to the, to the town center. We haven't had any major developments up there that Bulldog would lead to, with the exception of the movie theater, and I really think council needs to reevaluate the Bulldog Drive and possibly putting that on hold for future development. That's it.
Mr. Lewis?
Last year, last year, I think we received a printout of mileage rates around, around Florida, and I'm just wondering if, I'm not sure that came from Ray or from whom, but if we can get another printout like that to give us some idea of comparison as we look at the mileage rates for 2011.
I'm sure Ray can get us that.
Yeah, we'll get that.
That it, Mr. Lewis?
Yeah.
Mr. Mormon?
Yes, sir. I would like to encourage everyone here, everyone that's looking in, to attend the budget workshops. As we read the editorials, as we read the emails coming in, it becomes very obvious that a lot of people don't understand what's involved in what we're doing. A lot of people will show up on the day that we're taking a vote on the mileage rate, and they want to voice their complaints and their objection at that time when they're not aware of the work that's involved in doing this. So if you attend the workshops, you will have some knowledge on how the budget is being formulated and how we're going about this. And you understand what's county, what's school board, and what's city of Palm Coast. This is...
Just to piggyback on your last comment, for every dollar that our residents spend in taxes, the city of Palm Coast controls 17 cents. So you're right, the lion's share goes, goes other than to the city of Palm Coast. If we're going to effectively reduce the burden on our taxpayers, we can't do it alone, it's going to be a collaborative effort with the school... Mayor, just to piggyback on your last comment, for every dollar that our residents spend in taxes, the city of Palm Coast controls 17 cents. So you're right, the lion's share goes other than to the city of Palm Coast. If we're going to effectively reduce the burden on our taxpayers, we can't do it alone. It's going to be a collaborative effort with the school board, the county, and all the other taxing agencies.
Here, here.
Where, where? We're all in the same boat together. It's not that we have any unique opportunities in Palm Coast. Everyone else has those same opportunities. Everybody else is feeling the same pressures. Everybody else feels that their mandate is such that they have to provide certain services. It's the nature of the beast. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
No, everything was already covered. I would just remind the council and the public that the workshop, next budget workshop is next Tuesday at City Marketplace, 9:00 a.m. And then the following council meeting is when the trim rate or the maximum millage rate is set, and then we'll go on with additional budget workshops in August, with the final hearings in September.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Meeker.
Motion to adjourn the meeting really early today.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you for your participations.